All other property. Of that amount, .445 of the real property rate will go into the general fund. .00500 of the real property tax rate will go to park maintenance and construction. .5009 of the automobile personal property tax rate will go to the general fund. And .7500 of the other personal property tax rate will go to the general fund. It sets the bank deposit at $25,000 sub 1 percent, .025 of those deposits. The payer of these taxes must pay the sum due less 2 percent if paid by December 31st, 2015, or in full amount by January 31st, 2016. The above taxes may be paid from September 15th, 2015, at the office of the City Clerk of Treasure and shall be delinquent after November 6th, 2015. A penalty of 10 percent and interest at the rate of 12 percent for annum shall be charged on the accounts of such tax from November 7th, 2015, or as otherwise provided by council by order to the date of payment. And that's the second reading.
Make a motion. We approve 2015 number 9.
So moved, seconded.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Jerry. Roll call vote, Donahue.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Tucker.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Lynn.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye. So, Jerry. 2015, day is 10, amending the city curfew ordinance.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2015, number 10. An ordinance amending the city's curfew ordinance for minors to add a daytime curfew and clarify police officers' duties and penalties. This ordinance amends City of Dayton Code of Ordinances 97.10 through 97.99 to establish a daytime curfew in addition to a nighttime curfew. This ordinance clarifies police officers' duties in enforcing this ordinance and amends the penalty for violation of the ordinance as a Class B misdemeanor. And that's the second reading.
Make a motion and adopt 2015 dash 10.
Second up, I have a discussional motion.
Yes.
I have a question.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Joey. Comments?
Mr. Edg, question came to me about, I know this is easier to enforce now that Kentucky changed it to 18 for dropout age. However, the question came to me about children that are homeschooled. How will that be verified by the police?
What they'll have to do is they'll have to contact the parent or the homeschool administrator, and that'll have to be done on a case-by-case basis. The officer that ends up making the stop, they're gonna have to do a little bit of an inquiry regardless, because not, as you know, not all the kids go to Dayton Public Schools. Some of them go to county. And then you also have a large contingent which pay to go to school at somewhere like New Cat, Brossard, Highlands, those school systems. So there's always gonna have to be an inquiry, and the dates that they may be off or not off are gonna be in there, but they're simply gonna have to ask, the kid's gonna have to give them that information. Where do you go to school? And then the kid's gonna answer to them, "I'm homeschooled," or whatever, then they'll have to verify.
Because the question really, is there any kind of registry, or is that child that's homeschooled registered with the school district that they could check officially, or is this the kid's word?
No, well, I mean, they'll take the kid, they'll take what the kid says, but they're not gonna immediately say, "Okay, you're free to go," then they're gonna call and verify.
Who do they call?
Well, they'll call whoever's administering the homeschool, whether it be a parent or a third party. You know, some people have live-in teachers or teachers that teach homeschool for specific kids. They would call them and say, "Hey, does this kid go to homeschool?" And therefore, be good to go. There is also, from what I understand, though I don't know, and of course, Chief would be able to answer this question a little better, is I believe there is a registry at the school that says which students live in the district but are homeschooled.
Yeah, that was my concern, is, you know, if they find some kid, every kid will say, "Well, I'm homeschooled, call my mom."
Of course. I, you know, part of it's, and at that point, depending on, a lot of times, it's gonna be obvious that the kid's not doing anything that's related to their homeschool or related to any kind of school.
Yeah, but it's homeschool, and it's a holiday for us today.
Yeah.
That's the only hope I can find, and otherwise, I think it's a great ordinance, and it matches all the neighboring communities, too.
Oh, yeah, and that's the problem, is there's gonna be those situations, but our police deal with that on a multitude of crimes that they face on a regular basis, you know, where, "Oh, it wasn't me, it was Joe down the street," or it was, you know, Bill, or whoever. You know, it's, there's always that excuse, some plethora of, you know.
Well, if dates of daytime issue is gonna help with the trillency, I think.
Of course.
Obviously, with the school.
And it's one of those things, it's mainly just stop 'em, get 'em with the cop, and the cop can do the necessary steps of call schools, call parents, figure out why this kid's here, and if they should be there, and if not, get either the parents or the cabinet involved to, you know, put the, get the kid to where the, A, they either need to be, or in custody of somebody of legal age.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments? Don, roll call vote, please.
Member Tucker.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Lynn.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Now, I have four we talked. Do I need to say appeal? I will, I would just notice that we didn't receive that appeal.
Okay, we had an appeal, the next thing on the agenda, we had an appeal for Jerry Cruzy for a handicap spot. We're gonna table this until the October meeting to give him an opportunity to come and talk to the council about it.
That was where I was here for. That was why I was here, speaking his behalf. I didn't know if he was planning on being here tonight or what, but that's why, the reason I came.
Oh, and the only reason, and I'll go ahead and explain the thought process there of why that's being tabled, is we'd received the notice, but we haven't had the opportunity to tell him when that was gonna be heard. And under the ordinance, he is allotted what's called a contested hearing, which allows for certain due process, which means he can bring people like you to testify on his behalf. He testifies self, he can show evidence of, you know, how his family members may or may not come pick him up and need use in a handicap spot, effects on the community, so forth. Then the council will take that in under the guidance and ordinance and make a decision. But because we haven't given them notice of it, it's unfair to make it, for them to make a decision without giving them that notice.
So, October what?
It'd be the October 7th.
I think it's October 7th. It's the first Tuesday of the month in October, the regular calendar minute.
Okay. And he will, yeah, and I believe our city administrator's gonna send him a notice to say, "Hey, this is when it's gonna be heard for you." I apologize for.
That's all right.
And now, we talk about it in a regular session.
Okay, the next thing we're gonna talk about is the property that was for sale. Michael, handle that for us.
So we advertised, we declared surplus property for the three properties that we own, 5227, 4108, and 525, Fourth Avenue. We did obviously receive the initial bid of the gentleman that initially made us a proposal before we advertised, declared surplus property, so he was one of the people that submitted a bid. I did receive, and you all don't have a copy, but I'll pass this out now, two additional copies that came in after the deadline, but since we didn't, or aren't hearing it until tonight, I figured it'd be nice just to entertain, in case we got something that was a little bit better. In my opinion, they're not, but I wanna pass them out so you all at least.
In your opinion, they're not?
Well, I'll explain why, but let me pass them out there, but I'll give you all a chance to read through the two additional offers. I know you all have seen the first one. And if you want a copy, I do have a copy of the additional, or the original offer from Dustin Fawcettie. You all, would you all like a copy of that for pressure?
Yeah.
Actually, no, I didn't, left it on the copy, so I'll pass around my copy. I'll start on this. So three in total. As you can see, the first offer of Dustin was for all three properties, and as we noted in the advertisement that we wanted, we were accepting bids for all three with the stipulation that they be purchased for rehab and resale. Obviously, the purpose being, we'd like all three properties to go on the tax roll once again. So the first bid from Dustin included the purchase of all three properties. He kind of outlined it a little bit more specifically of how the timeline goes and what he would plan to do. Initially, he said he could come in, he would gut all three and fix the curb appeal, meaning the outside facade on all three of the properties. He would then fully rehab it first, sell it, use the proceeds to rehab the second, sell it, use the proceeds from the second to rehab the third. As I said, we did receive two additional bids after the deadline, but since we didn't meet until this evening, I thought it would be in the benefit of the city to at least entertain them, should you all choose so. The first one came in from Keith Young, and the difference between these next two bids versus the first is they're just for the purchase of one of the properties. It just happens to be the same one, 4108. So Keith Young submitted a bid for $2,165 to fully rehab the property at 4108, kind of to luxury occupancy, kind of lists the improvements that he would make. He puts an estimated total on the improvement cost, and he would like to start work immediately. The second bid we, or third, I should say, bid that we received was also for the purchase of just 4108 Avenue, and that was from the next-door neighbor. And they are, have offered $5,100 to purchase the property, and they would demolish the property, and their goal would be to buy it with their property lot, thus expanding their property and their yard.
And a comment on that is, those people have lived next to that for six years.
I think longer.
Well, what, I don't know how long the house has been in that.
Oh, right, right.
That condition, but she approached me a couple of times, and all I can say, I mean, I don't know what the best deal is, but they've lived here a long time, their children go to school here, and she said, "Why do I have to live next door to them? Why can't we buy it in?"
Sure. The, it's completely up to you, but what I would relate from a professional standpoint is, the second, the second and third offers, while I don't think they're bad offers, they are just for one of the properties, so we would then have to turn around and figure out, what do we do with the other two? I'm not sure if Dustin would want the other two if we were to accept the second or the third bid, so that's something to keep in mind. With the third bid, it is obviously the best price for the lot, but that's all you're gonna get out of the property really for the rest of, rest of its life, since it's gonna be combined with the other lot. The hope was to have these properties go back on the tax bill, so for 20, 25, 30 years in the future, you hope that you continue to collect tax revenue from the property. With the second bid from Keith, kind of falls in line with what we wanna do, he obviously wants to rehab it and sell it. Again, it comes back to, what do we do with the other two properties? Well, Dustin wants the other two properties, so that's something to keep in mind. His offer for the property was just a little bit more than what Dustin proposed for the audience here. For 5227, Dustin offered, no, I'm sorry, it's actually a little bit more. He offered $2,500 for, oh, this is for 5227, I'm sorry. 5227, he offered $2,500. For 4108, which is what the other two bidders bid on, he offered $2,000. And for 525 Fourth, he offered $2,500 for that property. So a bid, and then ask for all three properties, so I think that's important. Obviously, he wants to come in and do all three, but as I said, it's completely up to you, and I wanted to make sure you at least were aware of all the people that were interested, even though they came in a little late. I think it's the benefit to at least entertain them.
I can't remember, but did we advertise these as a package deal?
We advertised them all three together, just, these are the properties that we're putting through the bid. Didn't have to take all three.
Okay.
Well, when you say there's no benefit, if she, if it's torn down, she'll be paying taxes on the lot.
It's a.
And how long will this process, you know, he has no time limit on how long it's gonna take him to fix things up.
Right.
And that's three houses to fix up.
It certainly will be a benefit to the neighborhood community if that law were just torn down. So I shouldn't say it's not a benefit, and it may increase her property value.
That doesn't, he's got 90 days to rehab it.
The first one. I thought that meant the first, he's gonna do one first, and the second one another.
But, because he's got an owner ready to afford the property.
If you tear, if you tear down a home, with all due respect to the Caldwell's, I've been in the same situation. If you tear down the home, it may increase their home's value maybe by $5,000 or $10,000, maybe, whereas if someone was to rehab that home, it'd be on the books for, let's say, $60,000 or $70,000 forever. So we gain that much every year in real estate taxes, plus you'd have a family in there paying motor vehicle taxes and insurance taxes, et cetera. So I would prefer to see, with all due respect to the Caldwell's, I'd rather see somebody fix up the house. On the other hand, this second bid is $500 more than the package bid, and I think we owe it to the citizens to get as much out of these as we can. What I would propose is that, Michael, if you could contact the person that put in the bid on all three, and see if they would just accept two of the properties and take the higher bid on the third property for rehab, and I would ask for a timeframe similar to what, what the other bid is as far as how long. We don't wanna just hand it over with the promise.
Right.
What happens if the guy wants all three, and that's where he stands on the deal?
Well, I think we should come back in two weeks at the next council meeting to decide.
Because what's gonna happen is, if we have to take these two other properties down, and nobody buys them, you're looking at probably $8,000 per property.
Yeah, I was gonna say, to take them down. Yeah, now, instead of getting $7,500 or whatever, $7,000, we could be in the whole 16-year period.
What do you think, Joey?
In my opinion, I would love to see all three properties moved. I mean, I would hate, and I mean, Michael, you haven't gone back and talked to Dustin, I guess, about this.
We spoke a little bit, but nothing really in-depth about the renovation.
Not about, not, I'm talking about if he didn't get one.
No.
Okay. Because that would be my fear, is you, you lose him, and now you got two of them, you're sitting with stuff that we've had for however many years.
Well, I think we need to ask him, can we split it out? Otherwise, we're not taking the highest bid.
What do you mean, we're not taking the highest bid?
Wants $2,100.
Wants $2,100? Let me put my glasses back on.
Dustin is $7,000 for all three.
No, I'm talking about just the one individual property on 8th Street.
It's really only, it's only a $165 difference, so.
$2,165.
Compared to $2,000.
Compared to $2,000.
It's still a higher bid, no matter.
You do not have to take the highest bid.
Understood, understood. I just wanna be able to defend that if.
I understand.
Well, I mean, if you look at it as a whole bid, the whole bid, this one's worth $7,000, this one's worth $2,165.
There you go.
That would be my thought on it, is you're moving three properties and getting something that we don't have anything for right now, where on the other hand, you can take one, and now we're sitting with two more properties that we haven't been able to sell.
But if maybe Mr. Fawcettie is willing to just take the two properties.
Yeah. It might be.
I don't believe, the way I understand it, from what I've got from this conversation, no, not through him personally, but through Michael, that the one property that he's less interested in is the one on 4th Street. So I can't imagine him taking the one property, and the other property, he's not really that interested in to start with, but he'll take it, and that's the third property he's gonna finish, just a little cottage on 4th Street, or 5th Street when they're pulling.
4th Street.
4th Street, yeah.
Which one is in the worst-looking shape to the city?
All three.
In my opinion, it's 4108 Street.
Right.
And that has a lot to do with, not only the structure of the property, but I've been inside all three, the amount of junk that's in, that's in 4108. There's just, that's a lot of stuff in there that they have to take down. But the roof is in very bad shape. We've had, for a little bit more information, we've had in the last two years, probably 10 to 15 people that we've let into the buildings that were interested in them, and they see them from the outside, and they're very excited. And from those 10 or 15 people, we haven't got a single offer until Dustin came around. So many people have seen him, not many have made it this far, so my opinion would be to take Dustin's, get all three off our books.
You can do that one first.
It's a good offer, and that would be my recommendation. Not that there's anything against the other two, I just, it puts us into limbo of, you know, a lot of what-ifs. There's a lot of certainties with the first one, and I think it would eliminate a lot of.
I guess the other question that arises, I hear what Joe's saying, I hear what you're saying, Michael, but we keep on putting it off and putting it off. Here, we're going into October, and believe it or not, in about eight days, we're gonna have fall, and then next thing you have is winter. I'd like to see some improvement on, especially while on 8th Street, I like to see that, you know, some improvement before winter comes. So that's. 7th Street's a burnout that's been there forever. I mean, there's, I mean, we need to move on this. And that's what I'm saying, we need to make, take action on it.
I still think, if we haven't even asked, when was this receipt? Just today?
If you passed the deadline of where they had one.
Well, then why, we shouldn't even be doing this, should we?
But you have, you have the right to look at it or not, council, you can make that decision. We can accept it as half of the day as long as it's a reasonable amount of time before we, you know, if you look at it and take action. I thought there was the best interest of the city, if we got to see it, let's try to get the best deal out there for the city.
I think we would just get rid of all three of them, to the one guy and move on.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept Mr., whatever his name is.
Fawcettie.
Fawcettie or whatever, on the recommendation of our city administrator, I think we should take the federal party bid that came in, whatever it was, for Fawcettie or Fawcett. I'd make that motion.
I second that motion. I got a motion by Bill, taken by Joey. Don, give me a roll call vote on this.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Lynn.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Tucker.
Aye.
So, Jerry. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Jerry?
Can I address comments?
Yes, ma'am, you sure can, with just nothing on the agenda, if I was over here. Sorry about that.
Okay. Less than far from Vine Street, and some of you know you've been involved with the process that I called code enforcement on a property known as 304 Sixth Street. It's been a back and forth, but what I was disappointed to hear is that that owner of that property was never sent a letter. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Well, can I ask why?
You can, absolutely. The answer to that is, it's something that just didn't happen that should have happened. As I said on the phone, I took responsibility that that didn't happen. You said no, and by calling in, you also showed up at the last council meeting stating your issues. That's something I should have followed through with. It didn't happen internally, so I take full responsibility for that. I hope that since our conversation on the phone, the issue has been mitigated. I understand that there may still be some ongoing issues that you're concerned about, but we'll continue to keep an eye on that, I know. And I just caught bits and pieces, and he may be setting additional plans out tonight in his trash night, and he is allowed to coordinate with waste removal on special setouts, and I'll be sure to monitor it, to make sure that what he does set out is properly set out, and he's given due process to have that out for a certain amount of time. If it continues to stay out longer than that, we will take action. As I, as I told you on the phone, that day, if he had cleaned it all up the following day, we would take notice. To my understanding, everything was cleaned up and removed. If he's putting stuff back out again tonight, it is trash night, so we'll have to give him that due process. But again, I apologize, it's something internally that should have happened that did not, I take full responsibility for that, so I do apologize. But hopefully going forward, that won't happen again, and hopefully going forward, the situation will be made better.
Okay, I guess my issue is, this property owner has suffered no consequences. I don't know how you check to see that he paid extra for Romke to pick it up. I mean, they picked up five pieces of furniture, and Romke's, I mean, Republic's requirement is one piece of furniture. So if he paid extra.
He may not have to pay extra. If he called them and said, "Will you pick up this? I got four extra caps out there," and they agreed to do that, there's no fee to that. That's between.
Okay, so he doesn't pay.
No, it's between them. We don't know if he paid. It's not, it's not between the city. He don't come pay the city, and the city sends them a check. That's between the consumer and the garbage pickup people.
And we can't find out, as we did last week, with we were able to get in touch with Romke and say, or not Romke, sorry, CSI and say, "He's got some extra stuff out, did he arrange for a special pickup?" And they, in that case, they said, "Yes, we're going to get it this evening." It's not always that easy, but in that situation, we were able to find out. Now, how he arranged that, that's completely, as the mayor set up, between the owner and CSI, but every now and then, we are able to verify if they're pulling our lead or not, and in that case, CSI was able to confirm that they were coming back to pick it up.
Okay, I can guarantee what's going on tomorrow will be in oversized mode as well. But I, you know, the rest of the neighbors have to bear the consequences of the trash in the yard, you know, that's gonna attract vermin. That sofa was there for over a month before I called code enforcement. So this property owner just feels as though he can inconvenience everyone without any Another issue I had was in April, I thought the police chief would be here tonight. In April, I called Chief Havel and, you know, worked with his office, that the neighbors up the street had tags that had been expired since January. So for four months, that car sat on the street, and it didn't sit in the same spot, because that's how I was trying to get him, because it, you have to move it every 48 hours. So here's somebody driving with no tags, I know that means no insurance. It took three weeks, but to my understanding, that vehicle owner never got the first ticket. I thought the procedure was, they were ticketed three times and then towed.
No, you only ticket it once, and if you're still sitting there, you get towed after that.
Okay, well, he didn't have to bear those consequences either. But the other day, there it is back again. I said, "How did this car get here?" He said, "I had it towed," which I find it really hard to believe, that he had it towed. Well, it was gone 15 minutes after our confrontation, and I never saw a tow truck. So, I mean, the quality of life issues that I'm experiencing in my neighborhood, and these are small things, I just think that they could have been taken care of. I mean, if it was a major thing, like a house that burned out four years ago, well, we've gotta start addressing these things in a timely manner. I hope everyone agrees, so, thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak, Harry? Need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Taken by Jerry, seconded. Sort of checked by Danny. All favor, I'd adjourn.
The 2015 Home Fest will be held within historic Dayton, Kentucky, October 3rd through October 18th. See for yourself the next biggest thing in the tri-state area. Enjoy free concerts and demonstrations with your ticket to Home Fest. Naked Karate Girls will play the opening weekend on Sunday, October 4th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Other bands will play on Friday and Saturday nights during the three-week event, like Fourth Day Echo, Party Town, Marshall Brady, Amy Saylor, and Moment 44, all playing from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Fire Q will have a demonstration, as well as fine art painter Billy Tackett. Get your tickets for $10 at the event, or pick up discount tickets at Kroger for only $8. Make your plans to join everyone at Manhattan Harbor for Home Fest, October 3rd through the 18th. See for yourself this amazing new development and understand what all the buzz is about. Manhattan Harbor, where the Ohio River welcomes you home.